Very helpful, thank you. Okay, so knowing that, if we're ready to go. Thank you. All righty, counsel, we ready? Good evening, everyone. It is September 3rd, 2025. It's 5:32 PM. We are at Cape Canaveral City Council Special Meeting here in the City Hall Council Chambers at 100 Polk Avenue in Cape Canaveral, Florida. I call this meeting to order. With that, Councilmember Willis, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, good afternoon. Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Kellum? Mayor Morrison?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Councilmember or Mayor Pro Tem Kellum, I believe, notified a city manager today, and I don't think we should be expecting her. Thank you. Okay, so thank you again for joining us here. First thing on the agenda is approval of Agenda As Written or with amendments. We've really got two items here. Counsel, any changes?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the Agenda As Written.
A second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, a second by Councilmember Davis, to approve the Agenda As Written. Any further discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Or.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tem Kellum? Mayor Morrison?
Four.
And Councilmember Willis?
Four.
We're now down to item number five. This is public participation. Any member who would like to speak, ask that you please fill out a card and come forward. I do not have any speaker cards here filled out, but if you do intend, please raise your hand or come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public participation, bring it back to the council. Got a public hearing tonight. We are at item number six. The item for action is first reading and public hearing for fiscal year 2025-2026 on the tentative millage rate resolution 2025-11. City Attorney, oh, the resolution, I don't think we need you to read it. Thank you. This is a motion to consider the adoption of Resolution 2025-11, the substance of which as follows. A resolution of the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, adopting a tentative millage rate for the levy of ad valorem taxes for fiscal year 25-26 on all taxable property located in the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, providing for an effective date. And the second reading will be held on September 16th. Before we go to the public, being this a public hearing item, do we have any questions for our city staff? Any technical questions, clarify anything? Seeing none. If anyone would like to speak on this item for Action 6A, first reading for the tentative proposed millage rate Resolution 2025-11, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public participation on that and bring it back to the council. All right, counsel. I think maybe just a brief overview might be helpful. We have had, I think, three workshops, maybe two, and the opportunity to work with our city staff on the millage rate. We have two millages, the general government and the library-dependent special district. General government millage is 3.2063, and the library-dependent special district is 0.0411, for a combined millage rate of 3.2474 mils. Joey, is there anything that we should know? I believe we, or I should say, city manager, is there anything, stop with you first, that we need to know? I see this sheet was provided by, I believe, our finance department.
Yes, Mayor, and good evening, counsel. Just a brief recap, we, this council last met on August 19th. My mic on. This council last met on August 19th to discuss the budget and gave staff very clear direction on what they would like to see with the budget moving forward in the way of cuts and so, and what they would like to see put back in the budget. So the summary sheet you have in front of you outlines those expenses that were added, totaling $29,100, and we subtracted expenses of $164,628, which led to a net decrease in expenses of $135,528, of which will be put into the contingency fund, increasing that fund to $335,000. The big item discussed at that last meeting was the air conditioner unit, and could we, you know, earmark some funds from this fiscal year to help cover the costs should we have to make a repair next year? And so that's what a portion of the contingency fund will be used for, and then we will come up with the balance of any repairs, if necessary, from our repair and replace budget. So we're pretty confident that these are some numbers that you would like and solid moving forward.
Thank you.
I have one question, Mr. Willis.
Councilmember Jackson?
On this that you all provided, city manager, the CED Department Contract Services, that was for the Economic Development Action Plan that is being subtracted, is that correct? CED, CIP CED 1?
Right, for $32,000.
Yes. And is that, I know that we just had that economic development meeting, virtual meeting about a week ago or so, is that part of that?
I'm not certain if Molly, are you familiar with this one in particular or no? The CED Department Contract Services.
It's community and economic development, so it would have been TAMS, I believe.
Okay. Joey, go ahead.
I can clarify that one. It does not have to do with, is your question about the grants we give out?
No, my question was, the virtual meeting, we had a community and economic development virtual meeting with the vendor last week, and we've had one other workshop. So is this, that group and that program that we're subtracting out?
I was not in that meeting, but I can tell you that that $32,000 is coming from, we're taking that funding away from Kimley Horn Engineering.
Okay. All right, perfect. That's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Okay, that's great. I think, counsel, we're all clear on the changes, our city manager and finance department. Thank you, Joey, helping understand these. I also want to thank finance department and city manager as well, because I had a chance to go beyond the book and get into the line items in a spreadsheet, which was excellent. But the, most recently, the individual department submissions for the budget that come in, I don't know if, it was the first year I've ever seen them or been able to really review them, and it's extremely helpful, because it allowed, you know, to take a term like contract services or travel per diem, which show up multiple times in the budget, but each department, you can see the breakdown and really the justification in how they got to that number. And so I went through in the spreadsheet, now, I printed these out, because I wanted to go through a few of them and see if maybe we can clarify. Font is a little small, but I will pass, I think we can follow along, I will pass three down here. And I'd like to give one to city manager, and if we need another, we can take a recess in print. Let me give two, I think, our time definitely, Joey would need a copy, if we have it.
And we'll get, he's got one? Okay, cool. Thank you.
And I actually do have an extra copy if needed for now. Good, okay, thank you. And thank you, Amanda and Chetty, for printing those, helping out get them. So this is not the format that it was in. I added a couple of columns, but just to simplify what we're looking at, the accounting number is there. I went in and added that second column, which really provided the department, the department codes. Joey actually helped provide that, so I went in and filled those out for, to see and to understand. Then there's the description of the item. A lot of those terms are the ones that we see throughout the budget. And then I took from the sheet the last five years of revenue. It's actually, yeah, so 2020, 2021, 2022, 23, and 24. And so just as an example, you can see up at the top, ad valorem current. The 2020 ad valorem was $4,643,000, and I got rid of the decimals, just to make it a little concise, and human error, they're certainly capable of doing that, but these were straight from the sheet. So just on that one item, the 2020 ad valorem, $4.6 million, 2021, $4.8 million, 22, $5.2 million, 23, $5.5 million, and then 24, $6.3 million. The, then I did an average, that's that first green header that you see, of those five years. So those numbers that I just read averaged $5.3 million. The next column is the current budget that we just passed and we're still working in. Because it's ad valorem, most of that money looks like it's came in, so, but I did not include that, the current budget, because a lot of those expenses aren't finished. I mean, we've only got a little bit left, but I at least wanted it in there to know where we currently are. So we've collected $6.4 million, but that is not in the five-year average, starting in 2020 to fiscal year 24. And I should say it's 1920, because that's confusing, it sounds like five years. But the next item is the proposed fiscal year 26. That's the yellow header there, it's kind of in the middle, and that's the budget that we have in front of us that we're considering the millage rate on. And I took the average, that first green, so we averaged $5.5337 over five years. We currently have a proposal for $6.5 million. And then I did the difference from the proposed and the average, so that difference, for example, is roughly $1.1 million. And currently, we can see it's only $100,000 difference, because most of that monies came in, and so these are the revenues, but at least wanted to explain sort of that format. And I didn't spend, for the budget, which we'll get to, this spreadsheet will be, I think, brought back and we can discuss it, but just for the tax rate, I thought it was a good opportunity to explain that. And so, couple of questions that I have in regards to the revenue, and I think it makes sense for us to, we do this every year, to where it's kind of hard not to talk about the budget. I know that that's the next item, but we'll typically, we're going to approve a millage rate, and then we're going to approve a budget, and it's, it's sort of, we tackle it all at once, and then we'll typically vote on the millage rate, and then we will vote on the budget rather quickly. So the first thing, on the cash forward, which I think the proposed is $5 million, can you help explain a little bit? I would assume some of that is like projects that we haven't spent the money on, leftover Maybe a higher level breakdown, some ARPA money, is that included in there as well?
Yeah, I have, I have a breakdown of the cash forward in front of me.
Okay.
That is a mix of specific projects in the past that have been rolled over. We do not typically roll things over, but in specific cases, we may. So, for example, out of that $5 million, that $5,760,000, $1,150,000 is from ARPA money we received in the past that we're still going to use. So 1.1 million is from ARPA. $926,000 of that is what we're using from our unrestricted reserves, and then...
What was that number again, Joey? Sorry to interrupt.
$926,000.
Okay, thank you.
Is what we're using out of reserves this year.
Thank you.
And then $3 million is general cash forward, and that is made up of some of the select previous projects that we have very much earmarked and dedicate to do in the upcoming year.
And that number was $3 million?
$3 million.
And the ARPA was a little over $1 million, you said?
Yeah, $1,150,000.
Wow, that is awesome, thank you. So $3 million for a variety of projects or leftover, a little over $1 million for ARPA, little under $1 million out of the reserves, what we're calling cash forward. The, the projects that, I would imagine, it's probably a lot of projects, are there a couple of big ones in there that make up that $3 million? I guess, what would the biggest one be?
A few, yeah. The Canaveral, that one's changed, the fire pumper for about $500,000.
What was that, the fire?
The, I believe, the fire pumper.
Oh, yes. Our half that we pay. And the, I think the BCSO, like solar array, I would imagine would be one. Okay, great. So we've got a little over $5 million on hand, with the majority of it being different projects, with the fire being one of the larger ones in there, and the, okay, well, that's actually great. Let's turn the page, if you're following along, and really, I did a page break there. Oh my gosh, thank you. That is amazing. Okay, so I am going to page, I didn't number the pages, it's the third page at the top. It's expenditures. There you go, right there. So wherever, highlighted bar, we're colored green, but those are ones that I flagged, and so these two columns we haven't seen. I didn't do anything with the revenues. I did have a few questions, but as an example, the one, so this is, this first one's the legislative budget. I'm just going to use this as an example. I'm not suggesting that we do this, but I did put out what I think could be possible. However, because I haven't, maybe I don't have all the information, I might change my mind, but small example, travel per diem, the very first one, out of the legislative budget. We've averaged $5,300 from 2020 to 2024. Currently, we've spent about $4,800 in this current fiscal year. So I think that would probably bring the average down a little. The highest we've ever had, you know, $6,800 in the 2024, and the proposed budget, as an example, is $14,000. And so the difference is $8,000 more. So if it's a positive number, it's higher than the average. And so I said, what if we took that? And all I was trying to do was just get a sum of money to see how much could be cut. And one of the things we talked about in the past is, can we go through and shave and take away? And so this exercise, I put $10,000 in, which is, the highest we've ever spent is $6,800. It's still a big increase. And then that last column that I haven't, so the second-to-last column with numbers is the $10,000 is a idea of proposed amount, and then the reduction, it would save essentially $4,000. Now, I'm not going to go through, yes, Councilmember Davis?
No, I was going to say, we have a lot of new staff, so Chetty should be from there. Oh, say, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, and that's, that's a good point. There are reasons, and there's other travel, where I think that is absolutely true. So the bolded bottom legislative total potentially saved $25,180. So I'm not going to go through every single one, but you can quickly see, as we go through these, the exercise of finding funds. And so I want to jump to some of the bigger items. If we go to the R and R, which is, I think that's in non-departmental, yes, the R and R replenishment, so that's, keep going. Through those reductions, the total, keep going, was, I think it's still going, right there? Nope, that's a different one. Yeah, I would keep rolling, yeah, oh, actually, go back up, I think that was it. There's another R and R on that page. Oh, yeah, down towards the middle there, the R and R replenishment there. So, and this could be how it's calculated, but Joey, the years where, like, 2020 shows no amount of money, 2021 shows no amount, is that, the $44,000 the following year, is that what we spent out of R and R for that particular line item, $22,000 the next?
I do not have a quick answer to that. I might have to investigate that line item.
And in fairness to you, I spoke with our city manager last night, that's understandable. I intended to talk with you about it, but that's a big one, because if you follow that one, $44,000, $22,000, $102,000, and so the average, now, that could be an issue, because if it's factoring those zeros in there, that'll pull it $33,000. And then we've only spent, how about this, the 2025 that shows $14,286 roughly, is that what we, that's our current budget, is that what we've spent or invested in our R and R for this year?
Can you repeat, which, which number?
The $14,246 for the current year, for the column proposed, 2020?
I see that.
Or, I'm sorry, 93025? Yeah.
Yeah, I believe so, according to these, yes.
Okay. And so the amount of money that we budgeted for that, I'm going to just jump there, and this will be my, my, okay, so if I go to R and R in the budget, so we budgeted... $288,000, according to this book. So if we budgeted $288,000, and we've only spent $14,160, if that's true, I'm not saying it, then what is that? That's a...
So Mayor, I believe we just, the council, we brought before the council last meeting three items that would have come out of R and R for wastewater treatment. We just approved those plans to go forward. Each one of them was of five figures. I believe they would be coming out of this. I'm just not sure how current this would be in relation to, you know, purchasing, purchases that we just did since last council meeting.
Those three items, about $20,000 each?
They were all roughly in the 20s and 30s, yes.
Okay, so maybe that's not factored.
I would just submit that if there was any fiscal activity that we did on our end since last council meeting, I don't know that this would, these numbers would reflect that.
Yeah, Joey, Senate, after the meeting, that doesn't mean it's all been accounted.
Correct. Frankly, I just don't know the answer to this one, but I do know, we do send roughly $20,000 a month to our R and R investment account, so that could be why this is not picking up those expenses. And I do remember from the past meeting, the R and R expenses are not specifically expensed out of that account. Unfortunately, I don't know as much as John would about this line item. That's all I can say for now.
That's, thank you, and totally understandable, and I think...
Yes, sir?
We have John on the phone, should we want to ask him?
He's willing and can hear us absolutely.
Are you available? You can unmute your phone now.
What's the question? What's up?
Hey, John, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you so much for taking time to answer. The question was the R and R within the non-departmental budget. I think the amount, the current balance based on the latest shows roughly $14,000. Do we know if, does that, does that mean we've spent $14,000 out of that, or does that not necessarily reflect in the reason?
I think, yeah, yeah, I think, could you, could you hear me okay?
Yes. Yes.
Could you hear me?
Yes.
I think the best way to explain this is that R and R money that we put aside based on, based on what we believe we're going to spend every, every year. Our, our money may not be, may not be spent every year, but it's there to represent what's, what's expected to be needed. So if we don't spend it though, it's not like it's just a pot of money that's left. It's, it's basically, it's that whatever we spent on the budget, whatever the expense was, it's just going to fall in fund balance. So collectively, in the general fund for expenditures, it'll come to the bottom line on a financial, financial statement. Now, the thing, and the last, the other part of that is, any monies we don't spend would be, in a greater sense, sitting in our investment account accruing interest because the only time we actually pull money out of our investment account is when an R and R item is being purchased. Does that help?
It does. So is it the budget? I think I'm on the right one for the, and I've got the last year's, the adopted budget, the fiscal year we're operating out of now. It looks like we had for R and R,
Yes.
And then the latest report on the current balance shows $14,000. I guess what did those, does that mean there's roughly 270, $60,000 that has not been used yet? And it would flow to the bottom?
That's very, that's, you look at that in the sense of, yeah, that could, that could be the case. And the money, the money would have never been, if it wasn't used, it never would have been pulled out of the investment account and your investment account would be higher. However, and however, the R and R account that we keep investment isn't dollar for dollar based on what's spent because what could happen is, say you're buying a fire truck and you had to pull $400,000 out of R and R. It's, it's not like that year that if you have another year and you didn't pull that out of R and R, maybe you only spent $14,000, but your balance in the investment account has went down because the monies have been used for different R and R items that may have been more expensive or whatever in the previous year. So it's.
Thank you.
That's all we have to look at.
John, Mayor, Joey has the answer to that.
Go ahead, Joey.
Yeah, actually, this is one of those accounts that we do not expense directly out of them, just like contingency. And I have, we do a monthly R and R report. And the year to date, as of last month, we've used roughly $265,000 in R and R expenses.
Great, great.
I'm sorry, I didn't have that information sooner. 265,000.
Thank you, Joey.
That's excellent, which I think as our city manager, that would include some of those projects that.
I have the list right in front of me of what goes into that number.
Okay. So while it doesn't show up here, we can see that, I guess if this report was to run again, would that, it still would not show on here?
Correct.
Okay, so contingency and R and R, we should not look historically as that, that does not represent the amount of money that was spent for that year.
Correct. Those are outliers that we do not expense directly out of those accounts.
Okay, got it. Well, in the cash forward, if there was money left over, does that show up on cash forward?
In the R and R case, since it is a different specific fund, I do not believe it goes into the general fund cash forward. That would show up in a different bank account. John would be able to give a more specific answer.
That's right. That would, that would be in, so Joey, that would be sitting in the investment account and in the balance in the investment account.
Okay, and those balances, well, I think those are provided in our report. Well, I think those would be in our monthly reports. And so, got it. I think that is excellent. It's helpful. And that same, I think that those are really the only two that were a little confusing on understanding. If we went to A1A replenishment, well, is that similar? Anytime I see replenishment, for example, A1A shows a proposal of 24,000, but historically, we can't see any amounts.
Yes, that would be the same situation.
Okay, so that's like a dedicated carve out of R and R essentially that we intentionally wanted to use for A and A. I think it would be helpful to better understand that. Maybe there's a way to do it moving forward because I guess at the end of the year, if you've got your R and R projects, you just totaled them up. We've spent all the R and R money for this year. But what I don't know is how much historical 23, 24 R and R was unspent. And I now know where it goes in the investment account. Because do we know what our total R and R unspent is? Or is it all been used?
I would, I would need to run those reports, but I very much can run last year's R and R report just to compare.
Okay. So for convenience, so let's just say that, that 300, $6,000. So that was me, a very, very narrow mind, right? Just tunnel vision and I put, and I put $50,000 assuming that we've only spent, you know, 33,000. You know, we're averaging $33,000, but that is not the case. My last question to stay on that is then what do those amounts represent in the balance sheets? Like 102,000 in 2024 or 22,000? What is that? That's the money that hasn't been transferred to the investment account?
I would need to investigate that one.
Okay. Thank you. So right next to it, I think, proportion, or at the top where it says promotional activities. Do those numbers represent what we spent on promotional activities each year?
Yes.
Okay, so we spent 10,900, 12,000, 13,600, 21,000, and we aver, or 25,000, and we averaged 16,000? I'm not saying you to confirm that my average is correct. That's my math all on that. But I, I think that's roughly it. Just doesn't need to be precise. But we're proposing, and we got 26,000 that we, we adopted this last year. So we have 40,000 proposed in there. And so as an example, I said, well, could we get away with 30,000 and save 10,000 right there? It's the one at the very top of the, on the last page. Yep, right there on that line, they're following where her arrow is. Yeah. Yep, that's the one. Maybe we need all 40,000. But, but that was it. That was the, the exercise. The ones that I think, let's go to the infrastructure. Or no, I'm going to go to the Park, Parks and Rec, Perka budget, which is just up, so it should, yeah, say Perka in the second column. Yep, it's up just a little bit there. So if we start at the top, I'm not, as far as the salaries and the matching and all that stuff, you can go down. I think that's, I didn't touch any of that. But when we got into this one, professional services. Yep, you're, you're on it. So. Got Perka here. Items. And so, you're welcome. Professional services, looks like we started spending out of that in 2023, $20,000, and then in '24, we spent 5,400. So just those two years, it's a low average. But, and then we, we currently have 10,000 that we passed in this current budget that we were operating out of today. And so the proposal was 23,550. And so I, I said, can we, can we make that 20,000? And there's 35,50. And I did that over and over again to total 780,000, in which we just identified 300,000 is gone. So that's down to potentially 400,000. But some of the bigger ones, it's, maybe it's worth our time to do that. From what I could see in the, the budgets sheets, or maybe if Molly's here and she would want to help. If there's. I actually don't have that one. That's okay. Do we know why the professional services? And I think collectively, instead of just identifying one, the total in that department, I've got at 79,000. So the total budget of expenses for, for Perka is 1.8 million. That includes salaries and a whole list of other things. Take operations, everything. 1.8 million. Last year, we passed 1.1 million. So I'm on the, the bottom yellow line of Perka, the total down there, bold. And this is, this one jumped out because obviously in '22, we had some growth because we, we had a new facility. We started, Molly started working to, to program it and all the changes and the challenges that's happened. But in 2020, it was, we spent total half a million dollars Parks and Rec. Then roughly about the same in 2021, 545,000. I'm, yeah, I'm, if you want to scroll down just a little for this screen, I'm going to the very total right there, P R C A total. So 547,025,45. Then we made that in 2022 at almost, not quite double, but just under a million, 945,000. And then we go to 1,351,000 in '23. And this is what we actually spent, not with the budgets we passed. And then in '24, we went to 2.1 million. So we've averaged over, over those five years, 1.1 million. And currently, if this is correct, we've spent 1,169,000 out of a 1.1 million. So maybe it's a little, just a little over budget. But either way, the proposal is 1.8 million this year. So from 1.1 to 1.8. So that's the difference is, yeah, 700,000 or so. And that's the same as last year. But going through, I identified basically all the highlighted areas, about 80,000 of the 1,760,000. And just for following along, building and grounds maintenance, it's 50,000. I said, can we do 45,000? Equipment maintenance. And we've got 39,000. Can we do 35,000? And I went through and looked at it. And some of those items, I mean, very detailed justification, a lot of it makes sense. But my concern here is that the continuous overhead within managing those facilities, it's going to get very costly. Molly, I see you up there. If you have any input or insight on that, it's greatly appreciated.
In 2022, leisure services merged with community affairs. There's your jump. And that happened in March of 2022. So anything prior to March of 2022 was one single department. And that did not include all of the things that community affairs entails. And one of the things that is included in professional services, and this is just pulling a random line item out, is the box cast software that's broadcasting this, this meeting. So those are the type of like professional services that are lumped into that account. And if we're going to cut anything, my biggest recommendation would be to leave building and grounds and maintenance alone because that is my biggest challenge right now is trying to maintain what we have. Because for many, many years, it was not maintained at all.
Thank you. Okay. Promotional activities, we've got 18,000 proposed this year, but we've never spent more than 10. The highest was 8,700, 5,200. So.
In past years, that number's always kind of been left alone because we get surprises. People find out initiatives, council members approach us. One year, we had a surprise mailer that cost us over five grand. So that one's kind of one of those things where somebody sees something that they want us to participate in and we can tap into our promotional account to help promote the city for different initiatives that may not be apparent when the budget is drafted.
Yeah, and I think that, I guess the jump is, this seems higher. 18,000. And. Yeah, I'm thinking, can we, can we make 12,000 work? And potentially save, save some money? If my eyes aren't jumping there, I know that this is small.
You can make it 12,000, but if I have to tell you no on something that's promotional, it'll have to come from something else.
And I think we have, I'm, I'm willing to take those risks and I appreciate that. I, the big picture here, before I cause everyone a headache at staring too detailed here, at least we have it, is that going through, we, I do not, I do not like the trend on expenses. And I know that certain departments doesn't tell the whole story, like you said, because there's merging. But what we've done is we will put all the expenses out and then we will set a tax rate to make those expenses work. And I want to decrease taxes. Instead, we should be setting the tax rate and figuring out ways to make it work. We're currently at rollback rate, but we can't chase expenses with the rate, especially at the, at the rate we've done. I mean, the taxes have, our population's shrunk. We've got roughly 6,500 residential and a couple thousand commercial. And so any expenses in the overhead of that department is, yeah, 1.8 million. And so any expenses in the overhead of that department is, yeah, $1.8 million, and that's every year. So in three years, we could build a whole nother C5 for that amount of money, just the overhead. And I go back to those workshops and those meetings that were very spirited, and it was, this is not going to increase your taxes, move forward. And, you know, the O and M was really low. This was before Molly was the director, and we've talked about this in the past. And today, we're starting to see the challenges. I appreciate our culture, or the boards who's been working on it, and Molly, you've been in the center of those conversations about the fees. But when I go through, it's going to be a growing number every year, and it's going to put pressure back on the taxpayers. So this year, if it's $1,000, I've got items in here, it's $500, because when I went in, I saw, I think, like, the Athletic League is a relevant one. I think that's maybe a bigger conversation. But PAL in here has an expense of $28,030, and that's pretty much, we had a really high year, $58,000 promoting the reindeer run and all that, those costs that go into it, I would imagine, in the overhead and marrying the news there. But is that going to be an expense that potentially, if we make a decision with that, would that go away? Is that an opportunity to reduce?
Yes.
Okay.
To a certain degree, there's baggage with that.
Okay.
Mr. Touch, we can explain.
Well, and PAL is on your list of expenses that we're subtracting, that was provided, the 32,000.
Thank you. Thank you. I was tunnel vision there, so that's an excellent point. So we got PAL, 32. This total here, $164,000, that's a big one. And then the contract services.
Mr. Mayor?
We are proposing that that rolls into the contingency and taking it from 200 to 335. But if we did not move forward with that, I would, okay, I'm not sure we need that large of a contingency, but yes, Councilmember Jackson.
Well, as you're pointing these things out, I was wondering, I just had a quick question. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, you're fine.
Molly, what is this special events expenses? Because that jumped from 27 this year, 27,494 to 50,675. What are special event promotion expenses?
Everything associated with all of our special events, and one of the biggest jumps, unfortunately, Commander, is the crosswalk.
Oh, for Friday Fest? Okay. Thank you. I was curious what that one was.
So your budget really, I mean, when I think about BoxCast, you know, that's, I fully understand why you've been a part of that and
Community Affairs.
Very much, thank you. State of the City, this, everything, obviously, social media outreach. But that, that's interesting, it falls in your department.
It always has.
Okay.
Because if you recall, before it was called, let's recap a little bit. So in 2019, there was leisure services, and I believe for a brief moment, that Public Works was called Community Services. June can correct me on the timeline for that. When Community Services existed, there was a community engagement component to that. When everything changed in 2019, the cultural side of Leisure Services separated and was combined with Community Affairs. So it became myself and Stephanie that were in charge of all of the cultural preparations, a lot of the events, obviously, with just the two of us, we can't run a Friday Fest with two of us. So Leisure Services was still involved. But Cultural and Community Affairs was a completely separate department that had all of the website and all of that. So when the previous Leisure Services Director left and the two departments were combined, I brought everything with me because my background is more Community Affairs, and the Parks and Rec was learned skills.
And today, it's Parks and Rec and Community Affairs?
Yes.
I'm going Perka, but yes, PRs, okay. Thank you.
So you're actually looking at two departments that were combined?
Mm-hmm. That's helpful.
That's why there's no data past 2021.
The last line item, the vehicle replacement, we've got $40,000 to buy a new vehicle. Any reason we can't find a vehicle for $20,000 and save $20,000?
I suggested it last year, and it still got bumped out, so.
We've done a look for viable vehicles. $20,000 does not buy a vehicle, unless you want a used one. We're looking at a Ford Maverick. They fall into the mid $30,000 range, 35 to 38, depending. $40,000 will be just enough, that we won't spend all of that when it comes to this new vehicle.
Do we pay taxes on a vehicle purchase? That's a big, are we tax exempt?
Yeah, we should not be, yeah.
And we typically purchase vehicles via government contracts, so they are at a reduced rate anyway.
Right.
And is that a gas-powered vehicle or EV?
It's a hybrid.
Okay. And I know people are going to think, oh, well, Councilmember Jackson, but is a gas-powered Ford,
Yes, it's, yes.
is that cheaper than the, than the hybrid?
Going just gas-powered?
Mm-hmm.
I, I would have to look. I think it's probably about the same, depending on, again, the version that you get. The good thing about the hybrid is, especially when you're operating a just city, you can get a very high miles per gallon rate into the 40s and 50s, you know, depending on the operator and how they're driving. So it's an economical purchase. I think over time, you're looking at
That for our mileage isn't going to be that high in our city, being 1.9 square miles?
I would defer to Molly on that. This particular vehicle is, would be used quite frequently.
I was just curious if there's a difference, because I know with a lot of vehicle manufacturers, the EVs are a lot higher.
EVs?
Yeah. But I wasn't sure about the hybrids, so that's why I was asking, compared to a gas-powered.
Right.
The hybrid would be a good middle ground for us?
Yep.
Well, and the hybrid, literally, and no one wants to believe this, but it's literally what's being put out by the state. That's what they look for. They're looking for any EVs that you're buying, any hybrid vehicles that you're buying. They're looking for anything that has to do with the green, the climate change and green technology stuff. So if it's cheaper, I myself would rather see cheaper, because otherwise, we're going to end up with the state breathing down our necks.
We can, we can look at gas versus hybrid. $40,000 is still going to be what's needed either way. And just to clarify, hybrid is simply operating on a battery that recharges when you hit the brakes. It's not plugging in, yeah.
Yeah, understood. I just want to make sure that we're looking at the cost
Right.
versus what we think is, you know, just basically looking at the cost.
Absolutely. We haven't made a decision, you know, that's the last conversation we had, was looking at a hybrid. But my point is, is the same. It's going to be $40,000 either way. It's in that range.
And what was, and this is just a random note to your point, Councilmember Jackson, is as long as it's not specified in the budget, we aren't tied to it. So if something is specified, like in a situation that I was in a year and a half ago, I did find a vehicle that was cheaper for my maintenance staff, but I wasn't permitted to buy it because it wasn't a hybrid.
Under, gotcha.
So as long as it's not
As long as you hadn't defined it, it has to be that. Then it gives you the flexibility if you do find one cheaper.
Exactly.
Perfect. That's what I wanted to know. I appreciate that.
So the special events, Councilmember Jackson's question, I mean, historic, and we've got the summer rec program, PAL's separate. What we've spent, as low as this year, it looks like only $9,027,000. The highest was 30, lowest was four, but just as of lately, it looks like, spent last, or this year, we've spent $25,000. Last year, $22,000, $26,000. So it's, yeah, averaging, I'm sorry, I was reading those numbers wrong. That, what is the, in, could we take $10,000 off that and get by with $40,000, knowing that we've never, 30 was the highest, that looks like we're averaging just about 30?
For which account, sir?
That's special event expenses.
We can cut whatever you like. It's just going to reflect on the outside. So that could mean not the bands you want for Friday Fest. That could mean not crosswalk for Friday Fest. Like, it just, whatever we trim from where we are now will be evident on the other side of this.
Well, I guess it's an increase, though. So if we've, if we, if we're talking about keeping the bands that we like and keeping Friday Fest, the, we've spent 23, 2023, we spent $29,000. 2024, we spent $30,000. This year, we've only spent 17, oh, no, I'm sorry, $27,000. So 28, 30, this year, we spent 27. Now it's going 50. So what I'm, the way I see it is maybe something changed, or maybe we are going to enhance or improve, you know, the, or rates went up. I guess why the 40 would still be $10,000 more than we've done, but it's $20,000 more. So I'm not saying to reduce the amount compared to last year. I'm actually saying increase it substantially by $10,000, but why $20,000?
We can always dial it back.
Thank you. There's, I think, a few of those in there that, that potentially could work, and I really appreciate it, Molly. I'm not going to go through all of them. But let's shift back. We're talking about a tax rate. Joey, our current millage is 3.24, and the proposed 3.2474. Does anyone else have any questions for Molly at this time? I didn't want to keep you standing. And did you need anything to say at this time, anything else?
No.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Willis.
We will be removing the Sheriff's Department on the crosswalk in '27, since we'll be getting a pedestrian hybrid beacon installed.
Right.
So whatever that cost will go down. So, I mean, that means nothing for this year, but that's where we're heading, though, so.
And our debt service, you know, fell off a little, and I think we've got a couple more years, another one will pay off. The current, back to the, I guess, the item in front of us, that millage rate is projected at, I guess, at a 95% collection rate to bring in, it's the rollback rate, and so that is the equivalent of, you know, bringing in the same revenue as last year, respecting the property values increase, not counting new construction. We've got $6.5 million proposed. That's based on this rate we have in front of us now. And I should look at your number. I'm going to, yeah, we can go to the, I'll confirm. Yeah, at the, $6,507,858, which is more money than we brought in last year, I think, because we're, if we what would that millage rate be? If that's not too much to ask, and take your time if you need time.
I have it. If, if we cut an additional $250,000, that would reduce the millage to a new millage of 3.1242.
How'd you do that so fast?
I have a calculation ready.
Oh, thank you.
He's good at that.
Yes, and it's appreciated. Okay, so I think we can find $250,000. I don't think, to our city manager's point, our contingency needs to be $335,000, knowing that each line item, or many line items, I should say, has a little cushion in them in themselves. If we get a better deal for purchasing a car and it comes in at $35,000, well, there's $5,000. City manager has authority to transfer it. And I know the scenario, but what if it's 42, 43? And so we do need a contingency, but when you add up all the contingencies, it's about $1 million across every fund, every department. And technically, if we wanted to transfer on certain expenses from another fund, we can do that, too. I think council's got to get involved at that point. But 3.124 would be, would equal $250,000. The number on this screen showing $787,000 down at the bottom, we've already identified that roughly $300,000 of that is, is not good, not, but that still leaves about, you know, $400, just under $500,000. And so what I'm saying is, if we go through, and this is my eyes, and I don't have all the details, but there's little budgets, when I went in those departments, that, you know, they're rounded up to an even number, some of them are very specific, but I, we have to find it. We have to figure out a way to make it work. And again, it's not less money than last year. It's more. And I'm very happy that where we are, from where we started, and I know it's been a lot of work, but I really, home insurance doubled, groceries are up 20%. And I know our costs are there as well, but we have an opportunity to be a leader. Last year, Cape Canaveral, an exception of like Melbourne Beach, Cape Canaveral was the only city in the whole county, no, Melbourne Village, that's what I meant to say. They did a, very small, their whole budget is, yeah, half a million dollars, so.
Have you been in Melbourne Village?
I blinked, I missed it. It's, I love it. So they're, they did a substantial decrease, and who knows what was involved with that? That might have been, because sometimes fire department's not included. But in the city of Cape Canaveral, we reduced by three and a half percent, and we were the only city that did that. And I'm so proud of that. As small of a line item, when you add in the school board and all of it is, because we are a leader in the county, and it is not easy. And I know that it's because of our city staff that that's even possible. And I think this budget has a lot of items. And the other thing is, projects, all the projects do not get done. Like, when we pass a budget, some, there's money left over that it just didn't get expensed, like we heard, well, the fire truck, that's definitely, but there's going to be, and the $3 million in cash forward. The first goal was, can we lower the taxes? I believe we can. If we could do 3.12, that would be fantastic. And then it's, I think, identifying the big, high priority or the low priority projects, so our city manager has clear direction and to go, hey, if these few don't get done, we're going to and to go, hey, if these few don't get done, we're gonna be okay, but. That I think that's a strategy. And and work on priorities next. Maybe the next hearing or meeting, if if we need to do that. And and that's my proposal is can can we can we make three point one two work? I'm happy to go through this sheet further that we just went perca. Infrastructure maintenance has got some big items in there, and from what I can tell, it looks like some of those things are not, we're passing the budgets, but I love our IM department in June and everyone out there working hard, and the citizens. Appreciate. Everything that's happening, but there's. A couple, I think, that are worthy. When I go to IM, which is just a. A couple more above it, the big items. You go up, yep. Keep going, it's a couple more sheets. It's. Should say IM there, yep, right, go up just a little bit more, and you're there, so right there. So the first, like, building and grounds maintenance, you're on it. So building and grounds maintenance, we spent sixty seven thousand fifty four hundred six twenty sixty eight thousand. We average sixty three thousand. But in this year, we've spent seventy three thousand, a little over the average. But we've got a hundred eighteen thousand that we we need. So that's, I saw, well, there's, you know, roughly. Fifty thousand, fifty five thousand over what we average, it's eighty five. Could we take it? Yeah, thirty three thousand dollars. We've never. So can we get by with eighty five thousand, which is higher? Than, well, much higher than the average, the only year we spent more than that was back in twenty twenty two. And maybe it's not thirty three, maybe it's half that, fifteen thousand. But if you go down, you can see some of the bigger items in there, the other one, uh, street sidewalks, mobility, just below it. That is, uh. Sixty three hundred we spent in twenty, ninety seven hundred, ten thousand, seven thousand, big jump, twenty nine thousand was invested. This stuff's in twenty four, and then. We've got an average of twelve thousand, but this year I only see nine hundred forty five dollars. Now, there might be funds in there, I don't know if June's here, but maybe that's like the R and R. We've only spent two hundred, what, did I read that right, nine hundred forty five dollars? This in the budget that we passed, which had a number, I don't know what the budgeted amount we could go, but. Well, that tells me there's. Some money left over, at least sitting in there. And if we could take that down to, so the the proposal this year is seventy one thousand. The most we've ever spent is twenty nine thousand, and that's even an outlier. We averaged twelve thousand, but we got seventy one thousand dollars in there. So I modestly say, can we shave off? Ten, I said twenty thousand, can can we make fifty thousand dollars work, knowing that we've never went above thirty, twenty nine's the highest ever? And if those projects don't get finished, uh, or maybe I I need to know more. I've spoken enough, that's it, I want to give confidence that I think we can find two hundred fifty thousand dollars to hit a three point one, and these are, if you cut all these reductions in half, there's four hundred ninety eight thousand dollars. I think that I've at least highlighted to question. Hey, June. Where did, did you? I didn't even know you, did you just appear?
Yeah.
Have you been here?
Yes.
I'm so sorry. I I was like, this is giving me a headache, because I printed so long, thank you so much.
A lot of that's for striping that we didn't do, if you want to cut it back, we can cut it back. I mean, it's not, it's stuff that we should get done, but if we, we'll do what we can.
Can I can I jump in, Mayor? Thank you, June.
Yes.
I just want to to put all this in perspective for council and make sure I understand what we're hearing. You're proposing that we cut a quarter of a million dollars from this budget so we can reach the three point one two millage rate? And you're proposing that we do that tonight? Because we have an advertising requirement we have to meet on the eleventh by law. So this meeting, the purpose here is to adopt a tentative millage rate and to adopt the budget. And so any changes, and Anthony can chime in here, but any changes you want to make by additionally cutting, you're gonna have to vote on the budget tonight pending we revise the budget and come back to you at the next meeting with a new millage rate. And we have to advertise all that by April, or I'm sorry, by September eleventh. We don't even have time to have another workshop between now and then. So if you're looking to cut this budget by a quarter of a million dollars, then I suggest we start going line by line, and we'll have the department head directors lined up here for you to to talk about each one of those items. And I just want council to be aware, that's what it's gonna take to get down a quarter of a million dollars in one night.
Yeah, I think the, thank you, that is, and I think you referencing. Maybe talking through that city attorney, September eleventh. But before that, you gotta have time to put the number in and to to get it right. What happens when we advertise that first hearing, just say it was the number tonight? Or just say it was rollback rate, we know those numbers. And then that second hearing, we we could make changes, does a new ad need to go out if it's reduced? To say we pass?
Well, tonight's the first hearing, right? So the council has to adopt a tentative millage in a tentative budget. Then the staff will advertise for the adoption of the final millage in the final budget. So. The 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 council can make changes between the tentative and the final. So if you establish, this is, if you established a higher tentative millage tonight, the council can still go down a lower millage rate before the final adoption. Right, so. Theoretically, I mean, if the council's inclined to try to cut further from the budget. The council has two options, as I see it, you're either gonna do that exercise tonight before you approve the tentative millage in the tentative budget. Or alternatively. The council could adopt a tentative millage and tentative budget as currently proposed. And then prior to the final adoption, find the two hundred and fifty thousand to lower the final millage rate in the final budget.
Do we have to re-advertise that change in between tentative and proposal? Did would they have to go back and?
To lower, to lower?
To lower.
Before final adoption? No, you can do it right at the, up until the hearing.
So the advertised items that went out. Could change without running a new ad?
As long as it's the same or lower on the millage.
So if I may, Mayor, I go back to if your goal is to to trim this budget by a quarter million dollars line by line, then I would like the directors to to come forward and to explain to the council exactly what we do with those items, with the with those line items. So council understands what they're asking and and what the the department heads can do in return. And and their best to to answer that.
And I think it's important to say, I, nothing, I believe, is, we haven't struck anything, it's just reductions, so everything stays. Councilmember Willis?
Well, if I'm hearing correctly. At our next meeting. We would have directors here talking about line items, correct?
No, it's, well, Anthony.
But you don't have them all here, do you?
Next meeting?
Yeah, and adopt the tentative as it currently stands. And if they want, and if they want to lower it at the next meeting, they can go line by line and lower it at the next meeting.
Right.
That's the other option.
Got it.
You can do it tonight, or you can try to buy some time between the final, tonight and the final adoption to try to find two hundred and fifty and go through that exercise at the adoption hearing.
Right.
One or the other.
Well, that that would be my preference, is give them the time so that we don't put them in a bad position on the, at the podium, we let them sharpen their pencils how they can and come back with informed decisions. And I think they will come back with a reduction. And I'm I'm all for adopting a tentative rollback rate tonight and allow staff to work it to the point that we're comfortable with. Who knows, they may come back one more, who knows?
Right. It just feels a bit too spontaneous this evening for the directors. They've not been presented with these, this five-year average. And and I think in all fairness to them, they can go back and talk with their staff and and give a heartfelt consideration to the numbers that you're presenting, and can they actually do that? You know, because with the budget, we have opportunities, and and what opportunities are we going to deny ourselves by further cutting? I think we we need to hear that from them.
Well, and I think anytime we're cutting their expenses, their budgets. We might not be averting a problem. I mean, some of this might be just to keep us from getting into trouble on an issue. But let them come back with their arguments, and they might might even find different places that we can reduce. I think we have, we owe them that opportunity rather than putting them on the spot unprepared. So I I'm all for adopting the the rollback rate that we're at tonight and allowing staff to come back to us in two weeks. Or less than two weeks, but.
Yeah, and I think that's, when is the next meeting?
The sixteenth, right? Our, we have a budget before council. So, and we have the time set for the budget is five with council at six. And that's an hour unless there's an extension, and then we don't meet with council until after. You know, we're done with budget.
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, I think having this, all of us working from the same hemnal. Would be advantageous, and to have it in larger print would be even, would be even more advantageous for me, but. That way, we can quickly go through it. They they will look at everything we are looking at right then, right there, and have a number ready for us.
So this, absolutely, I, these are just what I saw, I agree that there could be others, and maybe we don't touch, I like the going back and forth. I think you heard some flexibility on some items, Molly is a good example. Grounds and maintenance, something that's important, but on events, okay, you know, it's gonna have trade offs. That's great, I I also, it gives me some time, I think I got, I worked on this Friday. And you gotta realize, all these are in separate sheets and stuff, and so, you know, it's kind of hard to think about getting it all in one workbook, but absolutely, bigger font, maybe we don't need to see the 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 five years. I think it's helpful. Or maybe with some help in working on a better format so that we can have a productive, quick meeting that the directors can see and and help guide a way to make that happen. And then I guess the last is, I do have some of the questions, we can tackle this later, on some of the revenues that were just a little lower, like the gas tax and stuff. Is that the trend, is that what folks are saying is?
Well, according to, according to FDOT. Gas taxes are taking a dive this year, so.
Okay.
We're we're going to have considerable issues with FDOT's budget. I think it's dropped like seven billion dollars.
And all those numbers and and what you're looking at are provided to us by the the source. Themselves.
And travel is really down all over the country, so that is gonna impact the gas taxes.
It's always been three hundred, three fifty, three sixty, three seventy, three twenty, three oh seven, you know, so averaging three forty five, and then we got this year only two hundred eighteen thousand, I think, and that's not finished, more money maybe will flow in. And, yeah, that's it. That's going down, I'm. I think that is exactly what I hoped would happen, is I did not want to rush, and it's, uh, working on it Friday, I worked over the weekend, and city manager carved out some time yesterday in the evening just to talk through high level. What I was seeing is kind of all mixing in my head, thank you, Amanda, and Chetty and everyone got these printed, but Joey, I think, uh, is going to be able to get what he needs done for that ad and everything.
We have Tamsin.
Hey, Tamsin.
Hi, I wanted to just chime in and point out, because I want to clarify before we go and start looking at things. Twenty twenty, going all the way back to twenty twenty, we had COVID and a lot of disaster response funding that circulated through the budgets, and I was curious if the average that you've put together includes revenue from those sources that don't exist currently? Or that are out or will not be continuing?
You mean like ARPA?
Yeah, like ARPA.
Well, yeah, it includes that.
Oh, it does, okay, great, yep, that was all I needed to know, just wanted to make sure it was all there, and we weren't basing it off of something where be something else to go.
There very well could be errors, or it does, the number, as we learned early, maybe doesn't reflect what we think it does, but yeah, ARPA's in there, and I think. Joey.
We have a several things in the resiliency department that come from FEMA or other sources, so I just want to make sure before that we have it all, so we'll, okay, excellent.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can we, can we get Joey to supply us with a digital version of this? Or or whatever, whatever it morphs into?
He won't, he has, this is. I added three columns, four columns, maybe more, five, but Joey emailed me the, this original file, and then I started.
Uh, yes, I can send you the same file I sent, uh, the mayor.
I can send my person.
I would like to have this one as well, because, I mean, it's, it brings up good points.
Yep.
And we we need to look at. What is the excess? Whether it's justified or not, but, you know, to see how we're going to arrive at the number we need. Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson?
So in addition of what Councilmember Willis was saying. I know that we've got some. You know, approximations on what we need to budget for that are high, like we saw one that was seventy thousand dollars higher. Could we take, and maybe I'm off base, but isn't that, couldn't we take an approach and take the inflation rate? You know, unless it is a documented item that we know we're gonna need to spend X amount of dollars for? And use an inflationary rate to increase for that budget line item if we don't know? You know, I mean, couldn't a standard like that be adopted versus having a wild guess? You know, and it going up in cases where you pulled out, you know, fifty or sixty or however many thousand dollars, twenty, thirty, or whatever? I mean, some of these line items, you could definitely look at it and apply what's our inflationary rate this year? We we spent this much last year, add on an inflation, the inflationary rate amount, and use it for that year, if it's an line item that we don't have a firm price for what that will be.
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, were you through?
Yes.
I didn't mean to. We we might also have to factor in tariffs, because who knows? Where that's gonna go with what? So I know with wastewater treatment, they they're using different chemicals now than they historically have used. And some of those might be drastically impacted by inflation or where you're getting them from. So there's a lot of things that individual departments are going to have to to look at and weigh. For instance, June's just gonna have to figure out, well, no, we know this is gonna go up. So we can't reduce that line item. I mean, applying an inflationary rate would be good, but it won't cover everything because there's too many variables in the economy right now.
Mayor? So to that point, when we go back to work with the department heads, we can put that inflationary rate as a figure if we can find it and calculate it in that and also wash it against what the department head thinks that they need and compare the two. And if necessary, maybe even provide both those figures for you. Tariffs, I will look into that as well if that's, you know, a number we can find. But I do want to say that when we get to the next meeting, it's advertised for five. Council starts at six. I know the budget can potentially go into the start time for the council meeting. Did want to talk about, you know, that meeting in itself. And should we not be able to come to a consensus then, what that would look like from our standpoint? Anthony can go over that with us. Anthony?
Thank you.
There is a provision under the TRIM statute that that in the event the final budget hearing on the budget in Milich has to be extended. It can be. There would have to be additional posted notice because the law allows the taxing authority to postpone or recess the final adoption and hearing for up to seven days, providing there's a prominent notice of the the additional date for the for the hearing. So.
And I wanted to just go over that with you. That's the last thing I think anybody wants. I think we want to finish this on the 16th, but I just don't know if an hour is going to be enough for you. What I'm going to task the department directors with is to go back line by line with the references that you can provide us and and get them all to look at every single one of those and and determine how much more they can cut. You've thrown out a figure of 250,000, so we can get as close to that as possible and present that those numbers to you. And it certainly will be our hope at that point that you'll look at those numbers and accept them and that we can move forward in in a timely fashion at the next council meeting. But if it's if it's not low enough or we can't get close enough, then what would it look like if we went beyond that time? And and then you couldn't come to a decision then, then you know where we would head, the seven-day notice after that.
Thank you. And I hope, yes, I hope we can get it done. One preventative might be that we we even respecting that Mayor Protim Kellum's not here this evening with us. We might all be ready to go, but she might have questions. And so if, you know, do we come in a little earlier?
Four o'clock, I think, would be good.
Haven't we advertised? I believe we've advertised already.
You've advertised the the hearing, right? For the final budget hearing should have been advertised.
No.
We have not.
The 16th?
No.
The CRA convenes right beforehand, too.
On the 16th?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've already. That's early, isn't it?
No, my mistake. Yeah.
We can we can cancel the CRA meeting, can we?
Is that what it is?
Yeah, it's the CRA that's before that.
Oh, at four?
Mm-hmm. I believe so.
I would rather cancel the CRA and.
Get this done.
Get this done.
Yeah. I mean, it's very workshop what we're doing here because it's it's not new information. It was new to me. It allowed. It is. And I even saw, speaking of insight, June was talking, all the departments I saw, you know, talked about the rate, the cost of chemicals going up and those things you were mentioning. So it's fantastic to see and understand. Tamsin?
Oh, I think we're required to have the CRA quarterly as part of our agreement. But we can look. No? Okay. All right. Well, good. I could happily combine the project status and the budget for the December CRA meeting if that needs to be moved.
That's great. That's not. We do have the annual or required. That's not that meeting, though, is it?
Yeah, that would be in December. But I can combine the budget for that with the updates, so that would actually work.
Okay, so we're talking about September 16th. Two weeks. I I am willing to do all that. And I think that's is that's great. Is we were talking about the CRA. We'd rather cancel that and give ourselves more time, potentially coming in at.
Is the CRA? I can't I can't recall. Does this is the CRA's budget is part is part of the city council's budget? Or is there a separate?
It's separate.
But the CRA hasn't adopted a budget yet.
Oh, yeah. So then we'd have to adopt its resolution.
Right.
It's got to be a separate.
Yeah, it's a separate meeting. Okay. So would that just be part of? So we will continue.
I think we have to meet. I think the meeting goes very quickly.
Yeah, it does.
Because we talk about it usually.
So the CRA, I mean, if the CRA has a meeting, what was the purpose of the meeting? Just to adopt the budget?
Budget.
I mean, you can keep the CRA meeting or start the CRA meeting even a little earlier.
Okay.
And dispense with that and then roll into the city council meeting.
I would rather go that route.
I think we we all like that route or all Councilmember Willis, Councilmember Davis, Councilmember Jackson.
So the CRA would be around three?
Yeah, that would help me is.
And then the budget meeting would start at four, go until six for the city council meeting. And I will be dead by 10:00. Just being honest. That's a long meeting for everyone.
Would the CRA meeting take more than 30 minutes?
My hope is that we've got this kind of worked out in our heads and we know where we want to go. And it it moves quick. I think when we talk about tax rate, it's going to lower the CRA rate. And so there's only handful of projects in there. I did not even.
But that's fine. The CRAs have to reconcile their budget based on the general taxing authority's final decision anyway. It's kind of.
Okay.
You know, normally the CRAs, they'll adopt a budget based on a projected tax rate for the tax general taxing authorities. And then we wait and see what the general taxing authorities do. And if it's not as projected, the CRA has to come back and say, okay, we're going to have less projected revenues than we anticipated. Then you have to do a budget adjustment right off the bat. So that's very common for CRA.
So the attorney, could you not do that the other way around so that you would have the budget?
You have to wait for the county, too. All right, the county's got to make a decision. And so then you have to. I mean, it's very common to do that reconciliation.
Okay.
After the initial budget is approved.
Okay.
I wouldn't. I really wouldn't worry about that.
That's great. Okay, so the weight of the decisions on the what's before us. And when we meet, we get it right. And I think if there's a reconciliation needed, we're talking about meeting a little early to repeat three. Or is the CRA meeting scheduled at four, 5:30? So we're saying meet much earlier.
CRA scheduled at 5:30? And then you'd have to move the council meeting up earlier. From three to 5:30, something like that.
Could council not meet at four, run to 5:30, have the CRA, then go into the council? I mean, the budget meeting at four, hour and a half. And if we have to push it, we we're pushing the CRA and just start to convene the CRA at 5:30 or whenever.
Yes, I think as long as the CRA is, if there's not a bunch of items, that's the only item. To me, that's just like another agenda item.
Yeah.
I could. Okay, so four. We can send those times out. Do we need to make any amendments to the schedule or any take any action on that during reports or at the end of this meeting? Or can we make this?
Go ahead, Joey.
I would just like some clarification on how I will be doing the advertising for the Milich for the next meeting.
Well, they still have to adopt a tentative Milich today. And then we'll be working towards lowering it at the next meeting.
We're talking about keeping it. We have voted yet.
Rollback, right.
We like the idea for short notice. I mean, to to go in and find which, how do we get there is uncertain at this point. And so instead of going through those exercises at this meeting, keeping at the rollback rate. And then between now and that next meeting, we can all work towards, give staff enough time. And then on the 16th, we will come together that day. So you would advertise before that meeting, I think, the numbers we have today and if.
That is my question. So will I be advertising in the paper the current rollback rate we were at now? And then we may, if it's changed in the future, it may change.
Assuming the motion, which probably happened here shortly, goes through, I think that's exactly where we're headed.
Understood. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, that's great. And the the this is just tax. It's a portion of our revenue. But I I think we're going to we're going to be in a very good position. Last thing I'll say is last year, we were the only major city that that lowered taxes. And with Doge and all the things coming down, I think we're going to be in a very strong position to look at revenue sources we've all talked about and and move forward. And so I don't want the view to seem like revenue is going down. It's about holding taxes and trying to be less dependent on them. The market's volatile, but I think we've got the right team to go out and get additional revenue. And that that's a good thing. So we'll see. I don't need to discuss any further. Councilmember Davis, is there anything?
No, okay.
Great. Councilmember Willis, anything?
I was just going to make a motion.
Before he does, if you don't mind, anything else?
I just want to say thank you to staff. I can tell that everyone's really worked hard on this. And we appreciate that. A lot of things that we saw at the Florida League of Cities Conference and some of the breakout sessions, these are part of the reasons why we're moving, in my opinion, in the direction we're in. We want to make sure we're headed in the right direction to where, you know, we have everything tight. It's it is something to me that's important as we look at the political landscape, both at the state level and federal level, that we make sure that we're as efficient as we can. And I know what work you all have done to make that happen. So I wanted to thank everyone. And Joey, you're amazing with those quick figures.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. A real live AI.
Seriously?
Joey GPT, trust me. Thank you very much and everyone. It's not to say that those department sheets were awesome to see that. It just explains it. And it's the the process. So great. I think we are in a good position to do that motion. Councilmember Willis?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2025-11.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis and a second by Councilmember Davis. If this, we've we we offered the public. Yep, we opened up public participation. If appropriate, city attorney, I can ask again.
If you if you did, I don't. I just don't recall it at the beginning.
Anyone is after that long discussion, if anyone would like to speak. Just to summarize, the motion here is to adopt the resolution as written. That's a combined 3.2474 Milich rate, which is the rollback rate. And if you'd like to speak, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back. Any further discussion on this council, the motion?
Do we need to amend the motion to include taking this back to staff? And okay, wanted to make sure. Thank you.
I don't think so.
Well, I saw the city attorney win.
That's just the consensus direction.
Okay.
You have a budget to pick up and then you can give some direction if you want to have a consensus on it.
Okay.
Okay, seeing none. City clerk?
All right, Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Protim Kellum? Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Let the record show, first reading public hearing item right, resolution 2025-11 passes 4-0. And we now are moving on to item 6B. This is an ordinance. I need to take a restroom break if there's any. You want to take five? I'm happy to step out and hand the gavel over if y'all want to keep rolling. But. You want to take a quick break before we take this one on?
Yeah, you don't want to hand me the gavel.
It's 7:18. Let's try to get back by 7:25. Six, seven minutes be perfect. Take a recess.
You want to give me the gavel? I'll put all kinds of laws in place while you're gone.
Yeah.
All righty, call the meeting back to order. It is seven thirty-three P M. We are a Cape Canaveral City Council special meeting. We just wrapped up item six A during our public hearing. The, the next and last item is item six B, which is first reading and public hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Annual general wastewater enterprise, stormwater, uh, enterprise capital, special revenue, capital project and agency fund budgets. Ordinance oh six twenty twenty-five. Mr. City Attorney?
Hey, this is ordinance number zero five dash twenty twenty-five, an ordinance of the city of Cape Canaveral, Bover County, Florida, adopting the annual general fund, wastewater enterprise fund, stormwater enterprise fund, enterprise capital fund, special revenue fund, capital project funds, and agency fund budgets for the fiscal year beginning October one twenty twenty-five and ending September thirtieth twenty twenty-six, providing for an effective date. This is first reading of the ordinance. It's also the, uh, required public hearing under the TRIM statute for the tentative budget. There.
Okay, thank you, city attorney. Any questions, uh, for our city staff at this time before going to the public council? Anything needs to be clarified, Mr. City Manager, before we hear from the public?
Nothing there.
Pretty strict. Thank you. All right, public hearing item, if anyone would choose to speak on ordinance oh six twenty twenty-five, uh, to adopt, or I'm sorry, uh, first reading, uh, for the budgets mentioned, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public participation, bring it back to the city council. Like I said, council, uh, we did our heavy lifting as we were trying to figure out what we could potentially consider for the millage rate. Um, and thank you for your time to, to work through that. As a matter of a, just update, I went in and emailed the packet that I printed to our city manager, and I think he'll, he'll be able to get it to city staff and whoever else needs it, and to the council. Any, uh, any comments, council, on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think by consensus, we're going to have staff attempting to reduce the budget, which therefore reduces the millage. So I don't know what else we're going to need to discuss at this point.
And I think any questions I would ask are, are on that sheet, and as you said, um, I think we can take it from there, so. That's great. Well, if there's not any other items, looking for a motion.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number oh five twenty twenty-five, first reading.
Second, I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis and a second by Councilmember Davis to adopt ordinance oh six twenty twenty-five on first reading. Any further discussion? Seeing none. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Protem Kellum? Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Hey. Ordinance oh six twenty twenty-five passes four oh on first reading, which concludes the two public hearing items. I do want to, uh, ask our city manager to give us an update on the break. He was sharing, I think, a proposed, uh, schedule for the upcoming city council meeting on the sixteenth. City manager?
Yes, mayor. So proposing on September sixteenth that the council convene at three thirty in the afternoon for a budget workshop and work until that workshop is over with a, hopefully a hard stop at five thirty, so for two hours for a workshop, three thirty to five thirty, so that the CRA can meet at five thirty, and that meeting should be quick, and then the council will reconvene for their regular meeting and, of course, adopting the budget at six P M. on the sixteenth. So, starting at three thirty and then ending when your six P M. meeting is over.
Thank you. So I think that formalizes what we were trying to do, uh, that by adding in a workshop on that day ahead of the CRA meeting, as he stated, three thirty. That works for me absolutely, council, just...
Mayor, is that a workshop or is that the second hearing?
It'll be, it'll be a workshop, and then the hearing will be at six P M.
Okay, thank you.
With the meeting.
Yeah, I think the city council is holding a workshop. The CRA board will then hold a quick meeting at five thirty, and then the city council will come back. So I guess it's two city council meetings and one CRA meeting in the middle? That, that works for me. Council, is, any, any opposed? Just wanna take up consensus?
Good.
We have consensus? That works. City manager, thank you.
Absolutely. We'll be ready.
Okay, any other reports from you or any updates that's needed as regards to...
None at this time, thank you, though.
City attorney?
Nope.
City clerk's office?
Yep.
Finance? Lisa, so happy to have you back, welcome.
Thank you.
Counsel, any? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and...